See how this is gonna be, Tim.
I thought you guys were friends.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Lasco.
Here.
Alderman Kahnman.
Here.
Alderman Jobb.
Here.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Thailand.
Here.
Alderman Dove.
Here.
Alderman Griffin.
Here.
Can I get approval for the May 27th committee meeting?
No.
Say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Treasurers report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Corporate Fund Monthly Cash Report for the month of May, we had a beginning balance of $5,557,725. Receipts for the month totaled $8,536,935. Disbursements for the month of May totaled $8,478,319. So our ending cash balance in the Corporate Fund at the end of May totaled $5,616,341.
Are there any questions? Thank you very much. You all received the Office of Budget and Management Contract Report by email and there's also a copy of it at your desk. Have an opportunity to look it over. Do you have any questions for Director McCarthy? Alderman Griffin?
Actually not for Director McCarthy. I just, I saw that we got the thing with Pruitt and number 54C that we're gonna get the, can we get the number one take care of?
Yes, that's about half the system that we need.
I can sympathize with you. I was up there the other night, at night it was 88 degrees upstairs, so.
We're making progress, but it's about half what we need.
Great.
Any other questions? Okay. Ordinances 2012-123, 2012-376, 2013-174, 2013-376, 2013-397, 2014-024, 2014-085, and 2014-029 remain tabled or in committee. Or could you?
Alderman. On behalf of the mayor's office, we're asking that ordinance 2014-024 be withdrawn. There's an ordinance that's going to be debated tonight that's similar to it.
Okay. So 2014-024 will be withdrawn. Any other requests with regard to any of the ordinances that are tabled or remaining in committee?
Okay. 2014-226 is an ordinance amending Chapter 36, Section 36.58(c)(8) of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended by eliminating sick leave payout upon retirement or death for non-union employees hired on or after July 1st, 2014.
Move to debate.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I ask you a question?
No.
Okay. I have a, Melina Tamaris-Collins. The memorandum that the mayor sent us on May 30th, on the second page, it talks about the amount of sick leave payout and sick leave sellback that the city spent each year. I understand sick leave payout is cash amount you get when you leave or your descendants get if you die, but what is sick leave sellback?
That is strictly for police and fire. It's a similar provision, but under their contracts, it's termed a bit differently.
Under terms of their contract, what?
It's just termed a little bit differently. The mechanism is just a bit.
But it's still a cash amount the city pays out?
Yes, that is correct.
And then in the memo, it said that 16 payouts had been eliminated in all but five contracts to date and significantly reduced for police and fire. So how is it, what this ordinance is proposing to do is eliminate it completely for new hires, but apparently you've.
On the non-union side only.
Non-union, new hires.
Correct.
But you've, in the police and fire, you've partially eliminated or what, how does that work in the police and fire with now with 16?
I'll have Stephanie address what their contract.
Okay.
Agreed.
In the last negotiations for police and fire, for both, for all new hires, we have reduced. We have not completely eliminated.
Yeah, but how has it been reduced? What is it?
Significantly reduced.
Well, what's the amount? Pardon?
In the police, they were able to accrue up, cashable up to 2,100 hours. We've reduced that to 400 for new hires.
For their life, for their career?
Correct. Cashable at retirement or death only. For fire, it was like 3,600. I'm gonna have to have the chief. I can't remember. We've reduced.
3,600 to 2,100.
Yeah, it was over 3,000 hours and we reduced that significantly and I can't remember.
3,600 to 2,100 and.
Division 1.
Division 1 reduction and the accrual.
Okay. You want to say?
The sellback at retirement has been reduced for fire union from 3,600 hours down to 2,100 hours for new hires. And the accrual rate for all new hires has been reduced from 20 hours per month to 16 hours per month.
Okay. Thank you. Is there some argument that, you know, at least allowing for partial sick time accrual gives employees an incentive to come to work rather than calling in sick?
Yes and no. We do have bonus days that they can earn for not using sick time. And we do convey to them that it is more like an insurance policy in case a serious medical condition should arise, that they have time available.
Bonus days, these are, this is for non-union employees?
It's in some contracts as well.
But do we have that for the non-union employees?
Yes.
How does that work?
If they only miss one sick day, then they're entitled to, and again, this varies by contract, but on the non-union side, two bonus days per year.
If they don't get, take any sick days?
They only have one sick day.
They have one or less, then they get two bonus days, meaning they get two additional days off?
The following year.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Edwards?
Yeah, I don't want anybody to think that we don't have a policy against abuse.
And we do.
Because if you catch somebody with abuse and you do the paperwork right and you follow it through, there's an exercise to handle that. So I don't want somebody just thinking that because we have a sick time payout or we have this, that's the incentive to come to work. The city still has the right to follow through if there's abuse and it's documented, they have the right to follow through with that.
Right. We would undertake progressive discipline if there was an abuse.
Right. I understand, but what is the policy? I mean, if an, does an employee, if an employee takes sick time, do they have to document it, provide a note from their doctor?
Only if they've been out for three consecutive days or more.
Three, three or more.
Would we require doctors?
So really, we have no way at, unless we, unless somebody calls in sick and we find they're out, you know, water skiing, we don't really have any way to check.
No, but that's true really anywhere.
Pardon?
But that's true really anywhere.
Right. So I understand the practicalities of it.
Usually it's documented over a pattern.
Yeah.
And that's how you're able to document it. The one time, yeah, you probably get away with it.
Right. I mean, we look for patterns if it seems to be, you know, these one-offs on Mondays or Fridays or the day after a holiday. HR does track and monitor that. We will notify management if we see such a pattern and haven't seen any kind of discipline come forward. So we do, we do look for those patterns.
Alderman Simpson?
So when you notice a pattern like that, do you offer employees employee assistance to see if there's an issue with them going on or you just go ahead?
It depends. People are pretty touchy about us getting involved in their personal situations.
So you go straight to discipline?
No. We work with the manager and we try to get more facts. The manager would talk to the employee. You know, first it would be a discussion between the manager and the employee. HR wouldn't be involved.
I'm sorry. When I said you, I meant.
Yes, the manager's.
Okay. The other question I have, Madam Chair, is are there additional, do employees get bonus days anyway? So that if they only use one sick day, they get two additional bonus days? Are those in addition to, like, for instance, the city, the state gets personal days?
Yes. In addition to vacation, personal, sick.
So they do get personal days?
Yes.
So they'd be additional bonus, they call it bonus days?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one. Personal days, if they don't use their personal days, can they, they can accrue those?
Those are lost. No. Those are, those are use it or lose it within a calendar year.
Okay. There's a motion for debate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2014-227 is an ordinance approving the tentative memorandum of understanding between the City of Springfield and Aspey Council 31, Locals 3738 and 3417 concerning the fleet garage consolidation.
Move to consent. Second.
Any discussion?
I had a couple of questions. So they have to do this training and if they, if they don't, they're supposed to get it done within a certain, well, this is the question. CDL, we want these mechanics to have a commercial driver's license.
Correct.
And that's what, so they could test drive all the vehicles?
Just so they can legally move a vehicle that requires a CDL.
Okay.
Because again, we're requiring all the mechanics to have all of this upward certification, so they're no longer just going to be working on one vehicle. The mechanic over here can go technically drive a rig if he needs to and have that CDL licensure.
The memorandum says that if they're supposed to get these certifications within a certain 18 months, but if they don't, then they can discuss with their manager getting additional time. Is it, is there some point, it doesn't say that if they don't get them within a certain amount of time, they'll be terminated or disciplined. Is that a possibility as well?
Yes, it is. We've had, we had many discussions with the union. We think that 18 months is a reasonable time period, but we will look at it on a case-by-case basis. If for some reason, one of the members is unable to get it in that timeframe, we will look at it. We will meet and discuss with the union to determine what the appropriate steps would be. Appropriate steps could be termination, but we will certainly try to work with these long-term employees to help them get the certifications needed.
But it doesn't say that in the MOU. It just says, one of the things where we would discuss getting additional time.
It says, should any employee who has been making a good faith ever fail to meet the requirements within 18 months, the union management shall meet to discuss each case on a case-by-case basis to agree upon appropriate action, including but not limited to additional training, timeframes to obtain the necessary job titles.
Okay. So it could include other things besides additional time?
Yes.
All right. Thanks.
Alderman Griffin?
Stephanie, if, again, with this movement, we'll take all these mechanics and get them CDLs. If one of these mechanics gets a DUI, are they then gonna lose their jobs?
It's subject to negotiations. There's some provisions in some contracts that do deal with when an employee receives a DUI and it affects their CDL, that their pay significantly reduces up to like $5 an hour until they can achieve, achieve the CDL back and there's a timeframe for doing so. If they can't do it, then they go on layoff status.
So you guys talked about that, you guys worked on that. I just wanna make sure that we, I didn't see anything out there, so I just wanna make sure you talk about it, 'cause I didn't want to surprise us.
Oh, yes. We've dealt with that many of times.
Any other questions? Okay, there's a motion on the floor for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
2014-228 is an ordinance authorizing payment to Michael Borrmester, a Springfield police officer, for settlement of a workers' compensation claim for case number 13294c484024.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any questions?
I had a question for the Corporation Council. This worker was injured in an automobile accident, is that correct?
Yes.
It says that the other driver was uninsured. Do our, when our workers are driving, are they insured by a liability, by liability insurance?
Well, we're required to indemnify them whether they're covered by liability insurance.
Well, the reason I ask is because in every liability insurance policy, there's a, in Illinois, there's a provision for uninsured motorist coverage, so that if you get into an accident with an uninsured driver, you can collect from your own insurance company what you would otherwise be able to collect from the other driver. So I was wondering whether that might be a way, if we did have liability insurance for the city, to recover this money that we're paying out from liability insurance companies.
I can check on that. Of course, if we, if we want to have a policy that includes such a provision, our premiums would increase for that type of rider. Well.
Alderman, we're self-insured.
Self-insured.
We're self-insured.
Okay. All right.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, there's a motion on the floor for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
2014-229 is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding with Sangamon County, Illinois, to reallocate funds received in connection with the 2014 Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program from the U.S. Department of Justice.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just had a question quick. It doesn't, you don't have to come up to this podium, Chief, but I was wondering if you could check for our discussion as to whether this money could be used to buy in-car cameras for, pardon?
We'll check.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
2014-230 is an ordinance to increase the number of Class E liquor licenses by one for Moon Buffet Incorporated, doing business as Moon Buffet, located at 1774 Wabash Avenue.
Move to consent. Second.
Discussion? There's a motion on the floor for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
2014-231 is an ordinance to decrease the number of Class G liquor licenses by one due to closure of business by Edward N. Madden &amp; Vets Post 256, doing business as Edward N. Madden &amp; Vets Post 256, located at 1330 East Jackson.
Move to consent.
Second.
Discussion? There's a motion on the floor for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2014-232 is an ordinance to decrease the number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to closure of business by the Sean Kelly Restaurant LLC, doing business as Ross Isaac, located at 1710 South MacArthur Boulevard.
Move to consent. Second.
Discussion? There's a motion on the floor for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2014-233 is an ordinance approving payment to RW Troxel and Company in an amount not to exceed $1,766,900 for the first annual premium of a three-year commitment for a property insurance policy for 40 City of Springfield properties for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to debate.
Second on the consent.
Which consent?
I'll second the debate.
You're late.
I don't know which one was first.
Discussion? Alderman Griffin?
Let's just go ahead and put it on debate, 'cause anybody can pull it out next week. So let's just put it on debate tonight and move on.
I'll second that.
I withdraw my consent.
There's a motion on the floor for debate. Any discussion?
A discussion. Our packets are what they are as far as Alderman, so there might be more information that we didn't receive, but typically when we get a exemption from the bidding requirement on the premise that it's a professional service contract, we have a letter from Jay Waverine. Did you issue a letter, Jay? It's not in my packet. I don't know if others have a letter from our contracting agent. There is a letter? Okay. Okay. Now, this is a ordinance that compensates RW Troxel. I presume that RW Troxel is acting as a broker here rather than as an insurance. So the underlying risk is not being insured by RW Troxel, but it's being insured by an insurance company. And there's no information in our packets about who or what that insurance company is that's underwriting the risk. So that's one point. And I think we need to know some information about who the insurance carrier is, the actual underlying body that's insuring this risk. Number two, if we're gonna exempt this bidding here, which is 1.7 million for each of three years, it seems like the professional service is being rendered by the broker and not by the insurance company. So I've got a question about how we can exempt the entire 1.7 million from competitive bidding. I can see possibly exempting the broker, 'cause he's providing professional services, by going out there and exercising all his or her best judgment to determine how we can best insure our property. But once we lock in to the insurance company, I don't see that as a, as a professional service. I see that as a measured risk that's independent of some person providing a service. So I just wanna throw that out there and those involved at staff can think about that. And I don't know what the past policy has been by the council, and, but I think we need to look at this, because this is a large amount of premium being paid and we wanna make sure that, yes, we've got unique power plants that are being insured here, but at the same time, there's a national potential pool of insurance companies that, we're gonna have to find a unique insurance company clearly to insure this risk, 'cause it's not typical. But we just wanna make sure we've done our due diligence and we've made a reasonable amount of effort to get the best deal for the City of Springfield and for the taxpayers. So that's enough, that's a lot, but I see, Craig here, here, I see a representative from RW Troxel is here as well, so if anybody wants to respond, please do.
Looking for a specific question and all of that, and the only one I can come up with is who the carrier is. The carrier is National Union Fire Insurance, which is the same carrier as last year. It is an AIG company.
Okay. The real meat of the question though is we're exempting, as Jerry Waverine has just stated, he's exempting this business the City of Springfield has, has available to bidders from the competitive bidding process or from the RFP process, whichever way the city might wanna go on that. And the question is, is it proper to exempt the entirety of this business from the competitive bidding process?
Well, I believe if it's not, Mr. Waverine wouldn't have issued a letter to that effect. I mean, we rely on the letter that he provides us with. What I can tell you is, we've had a relationship with Troxel for a very long time, going back many different administrations. It's been a good relationship. They are the ones who go out and attempt to find carriers to lay off this risk to. We have entertained, over the last couple of years, we have entertained people who wanna come in and, you know, talk to us about this policy, but what we find is, those people have had no experience in utility, insuring utilities the size and scope of CWLP, or they wanna bid it to three different carriers instead of a single carrier. This is a policy with a $350 million limit, and as such, it's a big policy. I, for one, don't wanna be dealing with three or four people, because you get the, they went that-a-way sheriff with who's responsible for paying a claim. I'm completely comfortable with the way we're handling this. We've handled it this way, well, pretty much for as long as I've been here. So I have no problems about it, or quite frankly, it wouldn't be here.
Well, I'm gonna, again, ask that we get a legal opinion. I'll make a written request, whether the entirety of this money being spent, $1.7 million, is exempted from competitive bidding or just a portion that will go to RW Troxel. And I assume that portion that goes to RW Troxel will be a slice of the total amount. And so that's, that's the request. Thank you.
Alderman Edwards?
Well, as was explained to us before, and maybe I can give a little history here. As it was explained to us before, there are very few companies that fall into our niche. They wanna do more, not less. And we're in that niche where, I mean, I think the last time we did this, they found two companies or three companies that were willing to do it. And Troxel is the agent for these companies. You can't go out and get a company, if you go out and try and get that company, they're gonna say, well, here's our agent. And Troxel, because they're so big, they cover a lot of companies. Now, we had this debate four years ago, five years ago, and we had a plant explosion. And Craig, you can bring us up to speed on what this policy did for us. If I remember correctly, and maybe I don't, but the damage was in like the $60 million range or something, and they paid.
The claim was roughly $50. The claim was $51 million.
$51 million is what the insurance company paid for. Was it this company or was it?
I don't know if it was this underlying carrier. I don't know that for a fact.
But it was.
It was.
And that was the argument still that was always used before. There are very few companies that will even look at us, because we're either too small or we fit into a certain niche. And Troxel, I think there may be one other insurance agent that's big enough to be able to handle in Springfield, but that's what was explained to us before.
Alderman Simpson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry. You know, I'm always for saving the citizens' money. However, I would be leery about shopping insurance companies when we're talking about major properties that we own here in the city. I think it's, it's similar to our own homeowner's insurance. You don't shop just to get a lower price if you're dealing with a company that's have, has a proven history. So I'm gonna kinda disagree with Alderman McMiniman in this instance.
Alderman Kahnman?
Yeah, just, Craig, you said you, we had had this relationship with Troxel, or Troxel's been the, our insurance agent for this type of policy since you've been at CDLBLP, but the policy has been with this company, do you know how long the policy, we've had a policy with this particular company, National Union? And. They were the carrier the last time this policy was looked at. Or they're the, they're the carrier today, let me just say that. But we. There have been, there have been different carriers. Hartford Steam Boiler, if you go back far enough, you know, people have heard that term. Hartford Steam Boiler was the primary carrier years ago, but insurance companies and sub-companies end up getting, you know, merged and bought out and names change. And Alderman Edwards alluded to this, but what, I mean, actually, this is kind of a unique niche in the insurance business. You know how many companies in the United States are even capable of offering a policy like this to CWLP? I do not. What I know is the companies or the brokers that have approached us have said, well, we'd like to insure 100 million of your 350 million and we'll get one or two other companies to insure the other 250 million. That's what we've encountered mostly, is somebody wanting to take a part of the risk, but not all of us. Because like I said, $350 million limit is a big toss and it's a big risk. And the Dalton 31 issue approved $51 million claim. But you're, I mean, you're of the view that we should have one insurance company? I think that. Absolutely. Or else you're arguing forever which one of the three is responsible for, first of all, you're gonna have a very complicated contract if you have three different parties that are responsible for three different aspects of a $350 million insurance policy. Our position, one carrier. Would it be fair to say there's probably not more than a handful of companies? I don't know. Okay.
Okay, there's a.
Madam Chair, I'd like the representative from RW Troxel to come forward. Take it easy, Corey.
Excuse me? What did? I always thought.
How many coal-fired power plants do you arrange insurance for?
This is the only one.
How many coal-fired power plants does RW Troxel arrange insurance for?
As far as I know, this is the only one.
Okay, that's the point I'm trying to make. You know, it may be, and we have a local preference for any of our local businesses, so that you can come in over some competitor and still get the business, because that's the way we've written our code. So we're all in favor of our local businesses, but as a city, we wanna make sure that we've really gone out to someone with expertise that can, that knows the market. There's, how many coal-fired power plants in the United States? 500, 1,000? So this is not the only coal-fired power plant that's been insured in this, in the United States of America. And I think we're kinda too quick here to say, let's just do things the way we've always always done things." We want our local businesses to get a preference. We've built that into our code, but as a council, we've got to make sure that the due diligence has been exercised. And again, our package showed nothing about what efforts were made to go out and test the market to see what kind of bids we might get. So, I know when we brought this up a year ago, it was kind of the same answer. We did the same kind of, "Well, we've checked it into the past, and this is kind of the way we do things." And I think, I think we'd like to see more, more than what's in our packet.
Well, I don't know what's in your packet because I don't have anything to do with that, but I can tell you, we did go out a year or two ago and got bids that whoever would bid on it, from what other companies that were out there, only handful, less than 10 that even are in the business. We also looked at a company that does just nuclear to see if they would even do it. So, we covered the market. I'm very comfortable with that, but as he's saying, that, you know, they want to take a piece here and a piece there. We give little deference to AIG, National Union's part of AIG. AIG is the ultimate company. They have different subsidiaries. The last couple of years, they placed it with their company, National Union, Fire Insurance Company. But ever since I've been the broker, a couple of years ago, you know, we did go out, look at all the markets, and very comfortable with what we have. My goal was to ultimately get less premium by the time I ended up my term of being the broker on the account than what was paid before. And I can tell you, if you look at the history, we had that. The first year, three years ago, when I was at first involved, we were able to get the same rates as the prior year. The following year, we changed the deductible, and we did get a significant savings for that. Last year, we had a little bit of a bump in premium, a little over 1.5%. This year, we are down in premium, close to 3%, and what we were able to do is negotiate with them to give a certainty for the next three, or, excuse me, this year and the next two years after that, so a total of three years, that we would base it on a loss ratio that if we hit the loss ratio target or less, we would get even a lower premium. And the following year, an even lower premium. If it hit the next level on the loss ratio, the rates would be the same. If it hit over the 50% loss ratio, then all bets are off, and they can raise rates or we can go out and move to another company. But we wanted to get certainty of future premiums and coverage, and I think we've done a good job of doing that. And if you look at the overall cost, at the end of the day, at the end of the six years total, we're paying less, much less, not less, much less than we were three years ago. I'm extremely happy with, you know, what we did and the savings that have been there. Part of the savings, again, a couple of years ago, was raising the deductible. But ever since then, it's been negotiating that we've done, and this is the first time, you know, I only know of another company out there that'll do a three-year policy on a guaranteed rate, and they won't do it for larger commercial ones like this. Cincinnati's the only one that I know of on smaller businesses that will give us a guaranteed rate. They won't touch this. We tried to get them to do it.
Wouldn't want them anyway.
Pardon me?
In my experience, I wouldn't want Cincinnati.
No.
Not if we want a claim.
Well, but anyway, we do have certainty for the next couple of years. We've done our work on it. You know, I've checked the market, and as Greg said, I wouldn't want to be dealing with different companies on the same claim. It's just like your homeowners. How would you like to have two companies on your homeowners, or three companies on your homeowners, and you have a $50,000 fire? Well, you're dealing with three adjusters. Was this covered, was this not? Does this one cover that particular cause of loss? This one might not. You have co-insurance, maybe you have co-insurance. It's, you don't want any of that.
But the explanation.
But we still have a less premium than what we've had before, and we have certainty for the next few years.
If you could provide us some more information about the actual carrier and the due diligence that you've exercised, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Chair.
Could I get your name before you leave?
Al Glunek.
Alderman Edwards.
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, may I ask, Mr. Glunek, can I, can I just ask you a quick question? Sorry. Just, you, how long have you been working on this account? How many years?
This is the third year, going into the fourth.
So, I assume you've, you know, in that time period, you've developed some expertise in this area.
Yes, I've just, a little bit of history. I've been an agent since I've been six, I'm sorry, 17 years old. I've held my license. I've joined my dad's agency. My, when he passed away, I ran the agency. I went in with Troxel. A few years after that, I actually started two insurance companies. And now, I'm doing double duty both as the agent and as an owner and president of an insurance company. So, you're getting the experience on both sides with me from the broker's point of view and how to work with and negotiate with insurance companies. Again, because we've actually started insurance companies. The other company, the first one I started, you know, was on the West Side. We're out in the West, but there. She used to work for them, and well over 100 employees, went from zero to over 100 employees in a few years. We have another company now that, we have about 10 employees, and I hope to get that up to 50 to 100 employees for the city of Springfield in the next few years.
Is this the largest dollar entity that any insurance company insures through Troxel?
That I can't, cannot, I don't know what the other brokers do.
And you said there's about 10, there's only about 10 companies.
There are less than that that would even look at this.
I mean, are those 10 who would do it 100%? Or those, some of those would do it just partially?
Very few, and you'd have to meet their qualifications if they would.
Do you have any idea how many companies would even want to take this, you know, do it completely?
Not the whole thing. I would even love my company to be able to write it and go out and get reinsurance on whatever, the small amount that we could keep. I cannot even do that. I can't do that with my own company.
When you say "your" company, you mean Troxel?
No, US Insurance Company, US Insurance Company of America.
Oh, thank you.
Alderman Griffin.
Just, and this is not for you, Al, but this is just, it's easier when I put it down in family budget ideas when you're talking about $1.766 million. But again, I heard somebody say that we have a $350 million limit on this, right, Craig?
Yes.
So, in reality, that's a dollar for every, with rounding, 200 bucks. So, if you took a $20,000 car, it's like us insuring it all year for 100 bucks. So, again, it's $1.766 million, but it seems like it's a pretty good price for what we're actually buying here.
And I think from all of the discussion from CWLP and Troxel and other Aldermen, the questions they ask, I think it's pretty evident that we're getting a very good deal, and there are very, very few insurance companies that would even be able to look at this, and there's been a lot of due diligence that's been done on it.
Agreed.
There's a motion on the floor for debate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
2014-234 is an ordinance authorizing payment to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency in the amount of $294,000 for the annual air pollution control Title V permit fees for the Regulatory Affairs Division for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? There's a motion on the floor for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. 2014-235 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of parts for the Unit 32 Coal Crusher from Hadron and Gannon Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $134,705.20 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? There's a motion on the floor for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2014-236 is an ordinance approving an agreement with the US Fish and Wildlife Service for implementation of wildlife management practices and authorizing an expenditure of $25,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? There's a motion on the floor for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2014-237 is an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement for irrigation, water, and license for the, for use of city property between the city of Springfield and DMI Enterprises Limited doing business at Springfield Piper Glenn Golf Club for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? There's a motion on the floor for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2014-238 is an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of Amendment Number Two to an existing farm leased with Jimmy L. Ayers for the Water Division for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? There's a motion on the floor for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2014-239 is an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with the state of Illinois through the Department of Transportation and Norfolk Southern Railway Company for the transportation investment generating economic recovery grant from the Federal Railroad Administration in the amount of $14,000, excuse me, $14,400,000 for the Carpenter Street Underpass for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? There's a motion on the floor for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2014-240 is an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with the state of Illinois Department of Transportation for the construction of the Carpenter Street Underpass from 9th to 11th Street, authorizing a supplemental appropriation of $14,400,000, and authorizing payment of $10,283,750 to the state of Illinois for costs associated with the project for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Discussion? There's a motion on the floor for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2014-241 is an ordinance authorizing execution of a memorandum of agreement among the Federal Railway Administration, the Illinois State Historic Preservation Officer, and the city of Springfield regarding compliance with Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act as it pertains to the proposed Carpenter Street Underpass for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Griffin?
Could somebody just tell me, give me the dumbed-down version of this? I know it talks about the evaluation of potential impacts, unknown archaeological resources. Is that in the location of the Carpenter Street? There are some, we have some resources there that we think may come under the historic preservation or?
That's, that's correct. There was some determination in the preliminary, yes, during the studies, that there was some residents there that are involved in the Illinois race riots. So, they want to make sure that we follow the guidelines for historic preservation. If there's anything there, and there's a whole process to follow.
Probably on the southeast corner there, those, the row houses there?
Well, in that area, so it's not determined as it was born.
Okay, so.
So, if anything is found, there's a process and work through and it's all the guidelines.
So, we're just saying that we'll go along with, letting them investigate this and determine if that is in or is not the case.
Correct. It followed the Historic Preservation Act. We have to follow this guideline.
And if it is, are we not going to build the overpass?
No, we can move forward. There's a process in retrieving that. Jim Muller, you may know more about it, but there's a process you would follow to remove the items.
To move them?
To remove the items.
Okay, okay, all right. I'll say, I know we're not going to, after, we just spent $500 million in the last five minutes. We're probably not going to say, "Oh, that house might have been, let's just go ahead and scrap the project."
We would not stop the project.
Okay.
Chairman, this is something, I mean, this is one of the strings it comes with the federal money, isn't it? To have to do.
Correct. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. 2014-242 is an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with the state of Illinois Department of Transportation and Norfolk Southern Railway Company regarding MFT Section 130047500BR and authorizing payment of $1,284,272 to the Norfolk Southern Railway Company for its part in the construction of the Carpenter Street Underpass for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Discussion? There's a motion on the floor for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. 2014-243 is an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with Hanson Professional Services Incorporated for the construction engineering services for the Carpenter Street Underpass between 9th and 11th Street, Project MFT Section 130047500BR, and Project Number TIG 5146087 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Discussion? There's a motion on the floor for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2014-244 is a resolution notifying the state of Illinois that motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $302,000 may be used for the Carpenter Street Underpass project pursuant to the Illinois Highway Code, MFT Section 130047500BR, for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Discussion? There's a motion on the floor for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
2014-245 is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a supplemental agreement with Hanson Professional Services Incorporated for preliminary engineering services for the 10th Street Corridor Railway Consolidation Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent. And Madam Chair, there is an amendment, a plea of amendment.
Okay, let's get this on the floor first.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and there's a motion to adopt Amendment Number One. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's adopt the amendment first.
What is the, I'm just trying to see what the amendment does here.
The original draft related to a request for authority to make payment under a budget amendment. However, that amount has already been approved as part of the current budget, so the Section Two that was in the original draft is not necessary.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of adoption of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and there is a motion on the floor for consent as amended.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Thanks, Chair. Just to Mr. Muller or Public Works Director Mahoney, just what, this is for improvements, engineering for improvements, not only for the 10th Street, but also the 19th Street. What are the improvements on the 19th Street that were?
This is all part of basically doing some of the engineering, getting the engineering to the point where we can go out and seek funds to continue with the process of moving to 10th Street. Those are all items that would have gone with that.
Right, but this says, I understand the 10th Street. We want to move the 3rd Street rail to 10th Street, but what is the improvement? This says improvements to the 19th Street corridor, too.
This is engineering, and part of it is improving the 19th Street location as well. So, this is the start for Ash, Laurel, the underpass there, as well as 5th, 6th Street work would be done there, as well as the 19th Street. So, it's all part of the relocation eventually to 10th Street, would involve that work at all those crossings.
I'm still not getting, what work has been done?
Improvement to be made on 19th Street is part of the 10th Street relocation, is part of that process, is what we're talking about.
Work on 19th Street is part of the 10th Street relocation?
That's correct. I mean, Jim, I want to speak to it in more detail than I.
I mean, I think it's good to improve 19th also, but I'm just trying to figure out what is planned.
The Springfield Rail Improvements Project includes not only the improvements to 10th Street, to move the 3rd Street tracks over to 10th Street, but also improvements on 19th Street to construct two new underpasses, one at South Grand and one at Ash Street, and to make quiet zone improvements along the full 19th Street corridor. What this agreement does is allows us to proceed to final design to some portions of the 10th Street improvements, along with some portions of the 19th improvements, specifically the South Grand Underpass to 19th Street. So, this will allow us to go to final plans for construction for an underpass to 19th and South Grand, so if funds became available, we could start building.
So, the ultimate plan is to make 19th Street a quiet zone as well as, I know you've got the plans to make 3rd Street a quiet zone.
Well, the plan will have quiet zones on 10th Street and 19th Street throughout the city when the project's completed, and there won't be any train horn noises anywhere in the city. The other improvements on 19th Street will be an underpass at South Grand and 19th, and an Ash and 19th. And some of that design work is included in this.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and seek the funding. The engineering has to be moving along so that we're having a better chance of getting that funding, the engineering is complete. And we already currently have the contract, the dollar amount already in place. have the contract, the dollar amount already in place. This is just really kind of cleaning it up from previous ordinance.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor for consent as adopted, for consent of the ordinance as adopted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. 2014-246 is an ordinance approving the final plot of Pullman Minor Subdivision located along the south side of Pullman Road, east of Brunson Lane and north of Veterans Parkway for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Discussion? There's a motion for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Is there any unfinished business to come before the committee? Any new business?
I did want to mention that three years ago, the Springfield Municipal Band made a commitment to take their, take their band out into the community, and they have come to Comer Cox Park, and this will be their third year, and they will be there on Thursday night at 6:30. It's always a really nice, nice time. I hope the weather's nice, and I hope that everyone will come out and join us. I know in the past, Director McCarty has come out, as well as several other Aldermen, so I hope to see all of you out at Comer Cox Park Thursday night at 6:30. Alderman Tyler?
I would just like to give Director Huntley a chance to tell the Alderman about the summer reading program that the library's kicked off. They did a lot of work. If you guys kind of take a walk through the kids' area, it's really impressive.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. This year, the program is called Pause to Read, so it has an animal theme. And children's is, again, very decorated. There's just all sorts of animals lining the walls, there's trees, there's a vet clinic with pets that was built by our security guard, Mark Kennel, who for many years has donated his own time to build a structure for children's. So that covers kids from zero to about 12. Then we have the teen program, 12 to 17. And for any of you adults who'd like to participate, the Friends of Lincoln Library pay for the prizes. And if you, every time you read a book as an adult, you get to put your name in for a drawing. And again, I will compliment the Friends because they are paying, for every child who reads 24 hours, they will get a $5 Baskin Robbins gift certificate. Last year, the Friends spent about $1,300 doing this, and it was very, very attractive to the children, very successful. So in addition, I'll just put in a plug since I'm here, for the book sale this weekend, come down on Friday, 10 to 6, Saturday, 10 to 4. There'll be books on the plaza we'll be selling. And again, if any of you want to see the renovation on second floor, we're getting very close, and so come over and I'll give you a tour.
Are you still on any books on tape?
We do have some, not as many as we, you know, only what we donated usually.